Hey Monica. Oh, you're on mute.
Is there any way to get the meeting unmuted? I know Monica asked that in the chat. Do we hold up a sign?
I don't know. It's it's crazy. They I you think they would have checked in with us, but I don't know. I I other than chatting, I did send Amy an email, but she might not be.
I can text her.
Yeah, I don't have my phone at my desk with me, so.
You're on mute, uh, meeting, ink. Alright, sent. Oops, I sent that to Andrew. Well.
We can have our own meeting.
Yay.
They said they're working on it. It's on Andrew's computer and they don't know how to how to do it, or I guess.
Oh, good. Oh, thank you. Gosh, I hate technology. Not my thing.
Jamie, do you have a presentation?
I do. Um, so we are not an actual like PDF or um, a PowerPoint to kind of walk through. But um, I am well versed in all of the FEMA regulations, so.
Well, good.
Yeah, so. And then do a brief little staff report and um. You know, I'm trying to go from there and answer questions and stuff.
Awesome.
Yeah. All right, we'll find. Business. Return rentals. Oh, I didn't realize the short term rentals was there at this meeting. That's awesome. I get a lot of calls about that.
Oh, do you really?
Oh, yeah.
That's got to go on my list to figure out. I mean, figure out the process, right? And who's fielding those and that sort of thing.
Yeah, there um, there are very popular destinations that.
That whole gorge is.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Okay, so why they're are they unmuted?
Is anybody able to hear?
Yes.
Yay.
Hey.
Monica, we're over to you to brief us on the water and sewer utility rates and system development charges, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, on the agenda, we've skipped through the we were down to me.
Shannon is now on it's off the line, so.
Let's do Monica. Monica.
All right, before you is the uh, resolution for our annual utility rate increase. The uh, rate increase is following the um, FCS rate study. That uh, the council has seen, you know, numerous years. I think we're in the last three years of that study. Um, and that means the rates have gone up. For sewer, 1.5% and the water rate increase is 2%. Based on that study. For the other items that are not reflected in that study, such as your SDCs. We're following the construction cost index of 2.6%. And then any other rates that might apply are um, such as late late fees, that sort of thing are all wrapped up into the Hood River's utility rates. And we have in our agreement that that we will follow those rates. And so you uh, Hood River has those and those are posted. Any questions on those rates?
Question for Monica. Pretty standard, consistent with the FCS studies from when you was saying, Monica. Well, no questions or comments. Thank you for.
How, you know, obviously with the fires and everything else. In this time of year, people using more water, are are our wells able to tolerate heavier usage in the summer months? And is there a way that have an adjusting? Billable cycle that adjusts for a little bit more water usage in the suburbs.
The big question, my understanding is. Where the risk is based is on annual use of the upper and the upper. So that's already happening in terms of capacity in the system. So I think I think that's very.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, it's just it's tough to mirror our water rates, you know, talk. People pay a fraction, we pay more and I hardly. My member assets and their care of the water.
You know, it's hard. Part of the issue is having such a small system, economies of scale, the river that's a big system. There are points, but yeah, we're, as you all know. Our purchasing backup wells finally in construction is going in right next to the well. A hybrid geologist, he decided, you know, there several years ago, down in Walbert, who's the expert. So it's then that an opt person you give for seventy five to two hundred years. It's the reasons in deep water, so we'll see. You know, our our well are existing wells, if you can talk down to them. But in any way, in any event, to answer the question, my understanding is, yeah, the fees take into account the seasonal use. Any any other comments or questions? If if not, uh, would someone like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution two zero two five next year? Or or it's actually zero eight, two zero two five.
Yes, resolution two zero two five dash zero eight.
That's it. Yeah, I'm making a motion to accept the rates and approve the uh, resolution two zero two five dash zero eight. Abiding water sewer utility rates and development targets.
Right, the second. Also, Gary, the second's in my second. All in favor? All in favor, unanimous? Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Sorry, do you want to go back to Shannon?
Shannon is not here.
Oh. I'm online.
Oh, Shannon, you are here.
I'm on the Zoom.
Hey Shannon, welcome. This is Mayor Anderson. Welcome. Uh, we're here to listen to your briefing on the Verizon proposal for cell antenna on our. Uh, Moesia Blas reservoir tank, so. This is the first time the council really briefed on it. What I what I'd like to do, Shannon, is have you do your briefing. We'll have the council ask questions and make comments in a little dialogue with you and then if anyone from the public has input. If Dan may have inputs, we'll also take in public uh, input after after the briefing. Well, you're ready to go, Shannon. I think all of us have your slides on our screens.
Sounds good.
So you see them on on screen as well. Shannon, welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Uh, my name is Shannon Prusha. I'm a consultant for Verizon Wireless out of the Portland market, and I apologize for not being able to be there in person tonight, but thank you for having me uh, on the cyber channel here. Um, I you have the presentation. You've probably already looked at it. Uh, in brief, we are looking to improve the coverage in Moesia. Um, for Verizon customers, any future customers, nine one one customers, we have reviewed the three different water tanks that you have. In the city and found that the one on Ponderosa Place is best suited to be able to cover the most geographical area. In the packet, uh, I proposed a photo sim that shows what the antennas would look like, that just a draft. If you're not happy with that, we can keep tinkering with it. This is my first appearance and kind of shot over the bow to see what the interest level is from the community and from city council. It's a great way to cover the city with um, Verizon coverage as well as generate some income where you have to do absolutely nothing. Uh, there's a lot of different pieces to the puzzle that we can still discuss. Um, it's it's all up in the air at the moment. We just found a spot that we can. Put the antennas without building a new tower, uh, without blocking views for any of the residences. Um, and try and just go a little under the radar as far as visual aspects. And there are different things that we can do to further camouflage those antennas on top of the water tank if that is an issue. Uh, we are just looking at kind of a draft proposal at this point. Um, and with that, I'm opening it up to any questions you might have. I know you have a full agenda and I don't want to take up too much of your time.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Shannon. That's a good slide that you gave us and I recognize that members of the public may not be able to see this right now, but. Look, as I I think about this, I start with the council's law and timing. I I there's seven seven things that come to my mind regarding this. You know, as you you say, one, the value to Moesia could be some redling, which we bet can be. You know, but there's trade offs for us. You know, one thing that comes to mind is EMF electromagnetic fields. Is that not an issue anymore these days? Health effects, those that they live up there. What you just mentioned, Shannon, aesthetics, what what is this going to look like from town? Is that concerns for people? Engineering questions, the impact structural effect on the tank, any interference with operation of that reservoir tank. We've had our. In the year. Uh, Stoner Bell taking an initial look at it. He said initially it looks like, you know, it's it's viable from that standpoint. The the monthly lease amount you propose, I think is probably locally low, so I think we want to talk about that. The inflation factor you proposed, I think we need to go with something like the consumer price index, you know, the fixed percentage. And then I I think we're going to need to do more aggressive public involvement on this one today. I want a basis price later if the council takes action. And lastly, on the on the point of aesthetics, you know, the thought came to me, I wonder if you could do a mockup somehow. So we can see what what is this thing really going to look like before we enter into some long term. Project, if if we're going to go that way. So I don't know of any of those points, Shannon, you have interests or alternative counselors who have their comments and questions for you. And I guess the last thought. I I think it's evident that. The fact you're you propose to put this in the city, the municipal boundary, it gives you freedom from the scenic area requirements. So there's got to be a big value, I assume, to the fact that being in the city. Saves you jumping rising through the hoops of the scenic area and regulations for new new towers in the scenic area. But you might come in on that. So any and all of you, though, if you want to comment back, I know both of the other counselors.
So actually, um, Mayor Anderson, this is Jamie Crawford. If I could come real quickly, as the as the city planner.
Say, I'm sorry, Jamie, could you we had some watch duty alarms going off on our phones. Could you use?
Um, could I make a comment as the city planner?
Sure, sure.
All right, um, so I did a lot of permitting for wireless facilities when I worked for the city of Wiltonville. There are a bunch of studies about uh, radio frequencies that um, show that things are safe. I'm not trying to be an advocate for um, the applicant. But you you brought up everything within this um, presentation that I was going to ask as well. Um, I think uh, at least painting the or doing some sort of a. Uh, obfuscation of the array of tenants would be beneficial for the city and the residents. Um, and also, I mean, as somebody who drives up and down eighty four, like I know that dark spot that they're mentioning. So uh, as a public commenter, like I would appreciate it. Uh, but yeah, um, I'll turn it back to um, to that again.
Well, I think I think, you know, a big concern, maybe, I don't know, I just anticipate is aesthetics. So Shannon, talk to us about aesthetics and how you can hide the antenna, paint certain colors or can it be smaller? I noticed on your diagram, standing feet on top of a twenty four foot tank, I think. And so it's it's pretty could be pretty intrusive, obtrusive. So Shannon, talk to us about that.
So as far as aesthetics go, the photosins that you received in the packet show the antenna configuration that we are looking for, that we need to operate to be able to project the signal for. Data, voice, texting, all of the all of the good stuff that people are using on their phones. That is just a raw look at what the antennas look like. What we could do, if this is if having a site is of interest to city council. Is we could propose to paint the water tank. It's a concrete tank, so it could be painted very easily. And then we could create a RF transparent shroud that goes around the antennas that is. That is attached to the top of the tank. We have to do a little bit more research with uh, city engineering as far as what the tank is made of. And what we could do to actually attach steel to the tank without compromising the tank. So we can come up with different renderings of what is proposed. If we can get some information from engineering of what the actual tank is, because you can't just attack, you know. In the Portland market, we've been using things like magnetic welding to steel tanks. Or not welding, just magnets. Um, and that can't be used in this application because it's a concrete tank. So I can work with our stealth division and find out something that would be more visually appealing. This that's something that we can definitely come back to you with and not an issue. Your question about EME as far as electromagnetic rate emissions. We run what's called a NIER report, N I E R, and that shows a plot map of what. Um, the radiation would be from those antennas, but there are no habitable spaces immediately. Adjacent to the tank. There are residences down below, I understand that. But these antennas would actually project over the top of those re residences. And if you think about it, these antennas, we attach all the time to the exterior of habitable buildings. So we can provide reports that show what these antennas are projecting are not. So we can provide reports that show what these antennas are projecting are not outside of the FCC guidelines by any means. As far as the lease rate, we are open to discussion on that. First shot over the bow, had to start somewhere. Same with the escalation. Verizon will not sign a lease that exceeds 3%. I propose 2%, so you could ask me if we could fall somewhere in between. Other questions that you had were the NSA. We didn't look in the NSA because we need to cover Mojer, downtown Mojer, the community of Mojer, and also that section of 84 that goes through there. So we have not explored beyond to do a new tower within the NSA, but we do towers all the time in the NSA. So that is not an issue. It takes longer, but that's not a drawback for us. There's height limit issues, which is why we went to look at water tanks first. And visually, those are less obtrusive than us creating something. And we also wanted to approach public property so that the community would benefit from the inbound revenue and not an individual person. So that's my fast, rapid fire.
What she just helped visualize, I was just going to visualize her antenna. Those antennas are highly directional. And so what she's saying is that beam is coming out, it's going to be, you know, visualize it like this. So it's going to shoot over the houses because it's trying to direct out to a farther location. Some radiation will be down there, but maybe similar to what's, you know, half a mile away or more.
Thank you. We do have resident expert, Tom Reeves, who's a wireless specialist. So other comments, questions, counselors first and then whatever.
Given that that's a good location for an antenna, would that, would there be a way in which if she shared if that down the road, T or T Mobile wanted to equally share that space for their antennas, would that be a helpful?
There's not enough room on top of that tank. If you were to build a tower, you could share a tower. But we occupy, we are proposing to occupy the top of the tank. That's a very small tank. And so if we are putting in three, four sectors, there's not enough room for an additional carrier to go on top of that tank. It is only one carrier ability.
Other questions, comments? Is it possible for the antennas to be along the side of the tank or do they need to be above the water tank correctly?
We don't attach to the side of water tanks because it compromises the tank itself. And at 24 feet, we're fairly low. Usually our sites are at least 50 feet. So higher gets us at a better broadcast range. So this tank has two issues. One, we can't really attach to the side of it because it doesn't have a catwalk or a handrail around the top. So if you go into different areas, different jurisdictions, you see antennas attached to tank handrails. But there's no handrail here. It's a concrete tank. So we have to go on the top and also to get the additional height.
Others, Gordon, go ahead.
I wanted to ask about 25 year lease. What are the implications for, listen, it's a 5 year term. So I'm assuming that means they can be canceled renegotiated after a 5 year term. The other thing I wanted to ask was regards to 25 year lease, what would be expected out of a lease expiration? Could we expect that you guys can do it or? And it's kind of hard to say because I think things have changed. Yeah, I guess from this, what would we expect after 25 years?
You were cutting out a little bit, so I couldn't understand what your questions were. Is there someone else who could repeat them?
At the end of the 25 year term, what would happen?
We would have the, you and Verizon would have the ability to extend it. In 25 years, we don't know what wireless use is going to look like if we're talking into our wrists or what that's going to be. So it becomes up for negotiation.
The other part, sorry, the other part of Counselor Essie's question was after the 5 year period, do we have the ability to cancel or renegotiate? Is that correct? That's correct.
No, it is, we will spend upwards of a million dollars to install an antenna site here. And so there are not cancellation policies available until after the third term, which would be 15 years.
Well, listen, let's, I think there's members of the public, I know Ned, you're out there, you're sorry Ned, I'll come to you. We have one more council question.
What is the plan for both property maintenance as well as tank maintenance? And how that would affect the cell tower as well as vice versa? Because at some point, I'm sure crews are going to need to get in to fill with the tank and either put on maintenance, shut everything down. And is that going to become a bigger issue because we have to have Verizon screwed alongside as well? And how is that going to look?
So we have the ability for you guys to call our national operating center and schedule a scheduled outage if there has to be maintenance on the tank. And if you feel the people who are doing the maintenance on the tank are standing in front of the antennas, we can turn the cell site off. Just a flip of a switch turns it completely off. The maintenance can be done on the tank. And then when they're done, they call the phone number, we turn it back on. So there's no RF exposure to the people who are on site when they are doing tank maintenance.
Okay, that turned off. Paul, how much of a lag is there before we're active access to the tank?
The question was about access to the tank?
Well, what kind of lead time would Verizon need in order to accomplish a shutdown? Say the city has to get in there like an hour and a half.
That can happen. That's, we prefer a little more notice. But if it has to happen, that's something that can be done. We have a technician that would be assigned to the tank site who would service, I think his market is from the DOWs to Cascade Locks. And so he would be, he or she would be familiar with the configuration and be able to make that. And you would, as a city or jurisdiction, your city manager, the Water Engineering Bureau, they would have that person's number and we can get that turned off if there's an emergency situation. Those happen a lot.
Yes, sir. This were counselor benefits. These are questions that is in your field as stoners are in flag. So going forward, a lot more details are going to have to be covered. Let me go. Ned, did you have comment or question that you'd like to bring to council like Shannon?
Jean, I do. Am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, thanks for allowing you to speak. I have observations and questions. Shannon, that the land bordering the water tower site in the north, though it appears vacant at this time, that's going to be my future house. For permit that we expect begins construction this summer. And my quarter house is within 30 feet of the tank. It's all the zoning requirements for Zedberg's and I all that. So I consider about EMF. So I will have branch over semi timeless thing. I also, again, I'm not expert on cell towers. But I do, I work on a house in a subdivision in Norfolk on Skyline Boulevard. This is 20 years ago, 20 years ago, Shannon, and the Red Zone Net Tower is $4,000. So you're proposing lots of the third, 20 years into the future of that installation. And, you know, I'm sure Verizon's revenues didn't strengthen that much. I imagine they grew significantly. So I'm really disappointed by the, or policy that you put into the city. Now, for the city, there's another thing. I was denied my original house color because it went there to go to Sheena Garrett. Now we're going to put something that's lighter up there. And, you know, now that there's money about, all of a sudden, rules change. I think that's extraordinarily unfair. And I am spending time re drawing, restating my house and, you know. So then it went into the regulations and now we're going to ignore the regulations here.
Hey Ned, Ned, can I just comment on that, just to be clear so everyone understands? What you went through was Mojer Bluff homeowners association, CCRs. That was not anyway a city requirement in terms of, you know, your siding and your color and so on. It's Mojer Bluff's, which is a different set of regulations in the city.
Okay, I stand for it.
But your point, I think, you know, your point's still, it's a fair point.
My point is still valid, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Ned? I want to move along.
Sure. Shannon, I would be very willing to meet with you to, I would be happy to meet with you to design something on top of that tower that would pay some EMF and it's less obtrusive, maybe in terms of the order.
Okay.
I don't, like, I don't know if it's close, but when I was, I'm not ready to say thank you before Ned, he said something was, was that any, were any property owners that were adjacent really directly notified because I found that the city might ask things about the form who realized we got the, the adjacent. So I was going to ask that question because that's common courtesy of the city before adopting the new terms.
Certainly. I live about just about two weeks ago.
Yeah, so I'm, I.
So Jane, just like, again, I mentioned this at the beginning here, more public involvement is in order. This is the first presentation we've had. I did notify Ned, I did notify another major up there. So we're trying to do this in a fair, objective, well notified process. So we don't have.
Sorry, Mayor Whit, Jamie Crawford here.
Okay, Amy, go ahead.
So the city actually does have a wireless code. It's chapter 1511 and I'll provide that to the applicant. And but it has, it's really detailed. So there are certain aspects of it that were not kind of aligned with the new federal regulations under, what is it, Order like 47 or something. But I can provide that to the council and I can provide that to the applicant and there's stuff about maintenance and shadowing and some other items. And there is a public process. It is an administrative process, but there are notifications to property owners within the vicinity. But if the council wishes, we could elevate it up to a council decision. It's up to you guys.
Yeah, yeah, just to be clear to Jane's point, we are far from making a decision. This is early, early preliminaries. Don't anybody think, you know, we're about to jump in legal agreement with Verizon. We got more work to be, listen, let me propose it right forward. I don't think we're ready to say no. I don't think we're ready to say yes. I think there's more homework to be done. The EMF question, the aesthetics question, engineering operation of the tank question, the lease amount question. What I would propose with Shannon, if you'd like to do this, is we do some more work, staff does some more work with you. Jamie's involved in the room, certainly Andrea and others. Here's a question for you. Shannon, it costs us money every time we have to look at something like this. For us to pay our city engineers, a consulting engineer costs money. When we get, if we ever get to the point of having legal agreements, it's going to cost us money with our attorney. Shannon, are you willing, is your client, Verizon willing to consider on a reimbursable basis or upfront basis, jargon some of those costs that we would be exposed to to actually run this to ground?
Yes, we do, we do see that in smaller communities because you don't have the budget to go down the road of what I'm proposing. So yes, if it becomes a question of reimbursing for the fees that you incur for a third party review, we'd absolutely do that.
Okay, well, how about this, Counselor, see if you have three. How about Andrew's got the task of work with Shannon, Stoner and Jamie, what have you, really drill down to these questions that we've talked about, including EMF, aesthetics, structural issues, operational issues, legal issues, liability, lease amounts, inflation factor. Let's put some more detail on and promote those questions and bring it back for another discussion, Shannon. And at that time, let's do, we will do and all come public meeting. And Shannon, we would ask that you, your client is necessarily come to a reimbursement meeting. So, you know, all in the public are fully aware of what the trade offs are and what the values. And obviously, we're closing council. Does that make sense, Counselor?
Yes, and also Shannon, you know, I've got previous conversations, so that you do have EMF expert that could come and speak to that.
So if I could say something, Jamie again, sorry. Shannon, if you, really the first step to all this is having a pre-application meeting with myself, Andrea Witt, if you want to be involved, we can open it to the public if you like. And then during that meeting, there is a fee. And then you will also be asked to sign that consent to consultant cost agreement. Is that something, it seems like you guys are at that point to really have these discussions. So I feel like that would be like a first step.
Yeah, absolutely. Today's presentation was just a, hey, are you interested? Or if city council said, we are all against this, pack your bags, go away. You know, that's where we would be at. So today was gauging interest. Do you want to hear more or do you want to put it to bed? So if you would like to hear more, I'm happy to go down the path of the pre-app and we can keep talking.
Yeah, well, I'll leave it up there.
And Jamie, just to recap what I didn't hear, what you proposed is these details would be worked and brought to a pre-application meeting that would be open to the public. Is that the bottom line, what you just said?
Yes, that's correct. I'm assuming that the applicant would be on Zoom. I'm sorry, Shannon, I don't know where you are.
I'm in Portland. I can, I just had a conflict. I was ready to come last week, but then the meeting got postponed. So I just couldn't make it there this evening. So I can come for any meeting, most likely.
Well, awesome. Yeah, no, I might try to meet you in person. So yeah, the first step would be the pre-app meeting and we can broadcast that. I can coordinate with Amy. It wouldn't be, it would be open to the public, but not necessarily something that the public could comment on. But they're able to join the discussion and hear about everything.
Jamie, let's, we'll take further discussion offline from the council meeting. The bottom line here, I'm looking at council members. It's not a yes, it's not a no. We have enough interest to pursue this further. Shannon, we take you at your word that our costs can be recovered within reason. Because otherwise, you know, this is a single for us, you know, spending money for something that maybe doesn't drive us back. So we'll go forward and. So we'll go forward, and Andrea's got the late decision. Shannon, thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you like, or you're welcome to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Good discussion. Recreational immunity, uh, is Laura.
She is not with us. Um, we're just doing a second reading of this recreational immunity by title only in order to adopt it.
Yeah, so you recall Laura briefed us on this, and you like the station, this is a great opportunity to help run chart challenges that you use on our property. So, any, any discussion here, Amy?
I actually have a question. I remember, um, maybe our attorney, she had this discussion with us, and then, um, the proposal for the bench down the, um, the launch site. Does that fall into, like, is that still technically on state property at that point? Like, I can't remember, there was a little bit of a discussion of it, but I don't think the word is like clear. I need some clarity of that.
So I, I met, as we read that meeting, I met, we're kind of reading down there. We looked at the sign, meanwhile, I took some work and looked at GPS maps and where the proposal is to the bench, which I think makes sense. It may be on State Park.
Oh, wow.
It's, it's like, you know, it's hard to tell because they, yeah, random area. I have to go show you down here. No, I'm, I'm in GPS map, see, the city property and it's part of property. And it's, no, no man's land out in the river. So, anyway, but I, I think back to community provision in our code would apply to this. So, uh, would anyone chair to do the second reading by title only? Volunteers, councilors? I'm going to, Ron's got, here you are. On this one, good. Well, we have to read it by title only on the script, there's a script file.
I have a hard copy, so I'm going to leave it. It's, um, just appreciate you for the reading, thank you.
Amy, do you need a reason?
I'm so sorry, what was that?
There you go. Yes, you, so you would, you would bring most of this head. It needs to be read by title.
If it's two ordinance, number two oh one. I move that council approves second reading by title only and adopt ordinance two oh one. And the ordinance title is an ordinance of city emolture limiting liability from claims arising from the recreational use of certain trails and structures within the city and adding a new chapter to title eleven of the emolture municipal code.
Any discussion? One point, um, probably within the, uh, agenda faculty. So, uh, up until July sixteen, twenty twenty five? This is one third of the day.
Yes.
That, that would make you. So, hasn't ended. So I have a second. Ron's motion hasn't ended by Gary. Second, no, no, second, all favor. All favor, great. Thank you, Ron, Gary. You'll make that correction. Good, okay. Excellent. That's a good, good step forward. Okay, moving on, uh, second reading and adopting a short-term rental ordinance to our ordinance. Short-term rentals, I'm glad someone would be making a motion to do a second reading if it's not bonded.
I can do that. And that gets impossible. Ordinance two oh two. Okay. Uh, I move the council approves second reading by title only and adopt ordinance two oh two. And the ordinance title is an ordinance of the city emolture adopting commitments to the operational rules and licensure requirements.
Any discussion? No, we have a second. Sorry, can, second, all favor. All favor, it's hard to make a difference. Your statement. On the one state, it would be very different. One extension, okay. Passes, thank you. All right, good work. Okay, we're now moving to the public hearing portion on the flip, playing ordinance proposal. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Uh, Amy, approval will be moving. Jamie, signers on the upper proponent.
We just needed to remove Acacia Berry and add, um, as a signer. We currently have Brenna and Ron as signers. We have the two. And then approving Monica Morris, who's finance director, and myself, uh, all online access for, um, transactional review and downloading statements.
Okay, do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, we do.
We are so moved to approve. Barry, second. Barry, the second, all favor. All favor, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jamie Crawford, are you still with us?
Yes, Mayor Anderson, I'm here.
Yeah, good, thank you. Okay, so I'll see if I can tease up. So now is a set time for the purpose of considering the land use application adoption of FEMA floodplain regulations to meet state mandatory guidelines for adoption. Uh, the criteria which must be satisfied for full of this action or listed in the city staff report, public testimony must be directed against criteria or other criteria defined in this regulation which are testified at least applied to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers applicant or staff an opportunity to respond to the issue, please appeal based on issue to the board in line with oral deals. And so the public hearing is going to be conducted as follows. Staff, that's Jamie Crawford, will provide a report briefly summarizing the application, any public testimony received prior to the hearing, the applicable decision criteria, staff's recommendations. Then we're going to take testimony from persons in support, people that have proposed, the people who draw up the proposal in that order. The testimony portion of the hearing will be closed, and then we decide if the judge is to continue or to dismiss. We'll deliver it. Uh, if you're testifying, please state your name and address for the record, and keep testimony concise, addressing applicable decision criteria. So at this point, the public hearing for FEMA floodplain regulations is now open. The staff land use planner, Jamie Crawford, will now present her report, any public testimony received prior to the hearing and staff recommendations. It's over you, Jamie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Anderson. Um, so what is before the council this evening is essentially the Oregon Model Floodplain Ordinance of 2024. So if I can kind of.
Can you pause for a second?
Yeah.
We're gonna try and make this sound better here. It's a little difficult in here, it's a lot.
Let me see if I can move. I'm so sorry, I'm in late coffee. Testing, one, two, three. Monica says it sounds good online. Can the council hear me? Oh, boy. Oh, um, it looks like the host, uh, the city recorder has accidentally muted, so I cannot hear the council. Sorry, Andrea. Yeah, you guys are still muted. Uh-oh.
Uh. Jamie, we need a little, uh, sign that says unmute. Can you hear me now?
I'm Monica.
Can you hear me now? Speaking of Verizon, right? Can you hear me now?
Well, um.
They got it figured out.
Oh, I don't know if I should continue with the staff reporter. Wait.
I'd wait, let's see if they can get it going.
Okay.
Maybe text Amy again.
All right. Got another station.
Yay, yay, yay.
Okay.
Jamie. Jamie Crawford, can you hear us?
Jamie, are you able to hear us?
Jamie, you want to hear it?
She, she, yes, I can hear you, and I'm sure she'll be right back, but this sound is much better now.
Was that Jamie?
No, that was Monica, but I doubt you guys can.
Sorry, it's Monica. Jamie was, I think, gonna try to call or something. She was trying to, yeah.
I'm here. Yay. Bear with us just one second. My, my computer speaker are, is not loud enough for everybody here. Bear with me.
I'm so sorry, Andrea. I can hear you guys great.
That's why it's coming.
Uh-oh.
I just, I did send you a, a link to everybody else's on.
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
It is.
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, really clear, crystal clear.
Is that Jamie? Okay, Jamie, I think you're good now.
Recording in progress.
I love the reverb. Um. Yeah, so.
You lost, you lost.
Essentially, oh, boy. Um, so right now, the.
Jamie.
Yeah.
Jamie, start, start over, uh, so we can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. I think, I think we're good. We, we don't have Jamie, but Jamie's gonna call in questions.
That's awesome. Um, I did send her a, a text message with the, the link to call in and the passwords and everything. So, um, so essentially, the city's floodplain regulations currently live within Title thirteen. It's thirteen point one zero. Um, it's the same sort of title that building codes are under, which is great. Um, it's outside of your zoning code, and so there, there aren't actually um, approval criteria to modify those regulations. However, um, the city, uh, the city is being pushed by the state of Oregon and federal FEMA, uh, so the federal, uh, emergency management association to adopt, um, more stringent regulations for floodplain management. Um, this essentially came out of a two thousand and nine lawsuit that, uh, the Portland Autobahn Society filed against the federal government. Um, and then some other actors joined on board, and there's been a lot of court battles back and forth. And then in two thousand and sixteen, um, uh, I don't know if it, I think it was the Supreme Court basically told Oregon, like, hey, you gotta fix your regulations. And then things were kind of put on, on pause, and then COVID happened. Anyway, so all of this is to say that, um, the new regulations that are before the council are one of the three options that the state of Oregon and the federal government has given jurisdiction. So the first option was to, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, um, I, I just jumped on. Is this Jamie talking? Just to, it's really bad sound. I'm on, is it?
Is this Jane?
I, I, yes, yeah. I'm on, I'm on this line now, so I just wanted to understand how I hopped in here. And who's talking? Is it Jamie?
Well, yeah, yeah, you're here now. So, uh, it's Jamie.
Okay, no, I, yeah, okay, I couldn't, I, I can't hear, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. And you're, you're actually coming in a really good point. So I was explaining to the council that, um, the state and the federal government have mandated that all jurisdictions who participate in the federal, um, oh, what's it called? Uh, the National Floodplain Insurance Program. So the NFIP, uh, the individuals that have been in the news, you know, with the stuff in Texas. Um, if the city wants to remain compliant to allow, um, the select individuals that do have their structures within the floodplain to continue to receive those sort of benefits from the federal government to get floodplain insurance, you have to do one of three things. So the first is to prevent any development within the floodplain. That's fine for other jurisdictions. Um, I know the, the city of McMinnville has prevented, uh, any sort of development within their floodplanes for the last twenty-five years. It's not reasonable for other jurisdictions. So the third option, um, is to adopt, uh, this permit by permit, uh, what they're calling a biological option, um, which essentially puts. which essentially puts the, the burden on any applicant to hire a wetland scientist or an environmental scientist or an environmental engineer, um, to show that their development is going to meet like strict standards related to like, um, habitation, uh, what's it called? Basically like protection of riparian areas, um, and, uh, some other garbles that you guys don't really need to be concerned about. So, um, with that off, though, um, in the city of Condon, we were talking, um, Mr. Meter and myself with this one, uh, applicant as an engineer. And he got all freaked out and, um, they had a really simple permit. And he said that if they were to go through that biological option, it would add upwards of $25,000 onto the application cost, which is not good for the city. It's not good for, for anybody. Right? So, um, the third option is to adopt, word for word, the 2024 update to the Oregon model floodplain ordinance, which was developed in concert between DLCD, so, um, the Oregon State Planners, and FEMA, their representatives in the federal government, uh, to make sure that this ordinance was meeting all statutory requirements, all planning goals, all administrative rules, anything that you could think of. But the caveat is that this ordinance, uh, that when it is adopted, if the city council chooses to do so, um, it'll go through review with FEMA and with DLCD. And they have a checklist, like, down to the language. So we can't really change anything within the ordinance itself because it's been vetted by everybody who lawyers. So what is before you right now is, um, a repeal of your previous language for floodplain administration and the adoption of these new regulations. And in these new regulations, not much is really changing for the city of Moesha. So, um, individuals that are within the floodplain, um, if they want to build a structure, they can still do that. They, they just have to, um, submit an application, which is not a land use action. It's actually a ministerial action. So Andrea could assign it to the city engineer, um, just to, you know, run their calculations to show, uh, what, what the federal government and the state is calling a, a no net loss of flood storage. So essentially, um, you just need to make sure that, you know, the water that you're displacing with your replacement would be, um, captured in some sort of way on site. Um, it's, it's kind of like stormwater regulations, but the city already in place. And so it's, it's not a development moratorium, but it's, um, you know, uh, essentially, it would be, it would function as a building permit, which is something that the city already processes. So, um, with that, I will open it up to council discussion and question.
Jamie.
Is this when I could ask questions? This is.
Jamie, Jamie, excuse me, let us have deliberation. We'll, we'll give you an opportunity.
Wait, wait, oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I can't, I heard Jamie, but I couldn't hear you. I had direct ideas about, okay, okay.
Can you hear me?
Not now, I heard. Yeah, it's super, it's super echoey. I heard Jamie clearly, you're, you're super mid, uh, yeah, okay, I'll shut up. Just tell me, yes, no, no.
We'll give you an opportunity and time.
I can't hear, okay, I can't hear.
So Jane, I just, um, I wrote in the chat, oh, it said direct message.
Oh, yeah, Jamie, I heard, I, I could hear everything that you said, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, what, what Mayor Whit, what they're gonna do is they're gonna ask me questions and then he'll open it up to public comment.
Jamie, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're like this, but yes, if you talk slowly, yes.
Mutant, mutant.
Okay.
Jamie, Jamie, please, just keep your peace for a moment. I'll give you an opportunity. Jamie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So listen, here's what I think you need to do. Crisply and concisely explain the three options and then verify that, I think what I heard you say is if we don't adopt one of the options, then we would lose, landowners would lose the opportunity to be in the NFIP, National Floodplain Insurance Program. Is that right? Is that the trade-off? If we don't adopt an ordinance here along one of the three lines, we would lose floodplain insurance for those people that require it or want, is that correct?
Yes, uh, so Mayor Anderson, that is correct. So the first option.
Yeah, just give us, just, just right to the T, just boil down crisply, what are the three options?
So the first option is no development. So anybody within a floodplain cannot, uh, modify their structures, rebuild it after it burned down. It's just, there's a moratorium, no, nothing. The second option is, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I might, just keep it crisp, you're doing good, go ahead.
Yeah, so the second option is what the state and the federal government is calling, quote, "the biological option." So that means that you put, um, the burden of proof on applicants to, um, they need to go hire, um, a, a environmental engineer or an environmental scientist or a wetland scientist or, uh, uh, some sort of a habitat, whatever, to create a report that shows that they are meeting X, Y, Z. So it's a permit by permit basis and the estimation of that cost for somebody running through like a floodplain permit would be roughly around 25 grand. And then the third option is the one that I'm suggesting the council adopts. It is this model ordinance directed from the state of Oregon. But the language can't really be changed or manipulated, uh, but it, it provides the city engineer clear direction. All he has to do is, I love and hate engineers, but anyway, so all they have to do is like punching calculations until, you know, their, their line of thought goes up to pop out, um, whether or not they meet the ordinance. And that's it.
Okay. Yeah, thank, thank you for that, that's helpful. Here's a question. The, the two areas that this would apply to in Moesha are the lower end of Moesha Creek and then the lower end of Rock Creek, that's a, is that correct?
So, yeah, yeah, um, here's, here's the other. I was gonna say, at the same time, um, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Anderson, do you mind?
Okay, let me ask.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm trying to, so answer the question of what lots or residences could be impacted by the ability to have floodplain insurance or the inability to have floodplain insurance? For example, is that Kathy Fitzpatrick's house? Is it the wastewater treatment plant? I've seen the maps before, I'm just trying to drill down for council so we understand what the implications are and what the trade-offs are. Follow?
Yeah, no, of course. Um, so the notice that we sent out to property owners, um, all right, I'll back up a little bit. So the county is, they have been in the process of updating their FEMA floodplain mapping and it's actually more accurate than the floodplain mapping that was available based on like 1987 or 1984, whenever they, you know, took a giant crayon and decided to draw a line. So, uh, the updated mapping is based on LiDAR information, um, as well as, uh, stream flow information, like downstream, from how much Moesha Creek and Rock Creek are like, you know, flowing into the Columbia, um, as well as measures of the Columbia. Um, so the updated mapping is not actually in front of the council for discussion. You guys are, um, it's already been adopted. There is.
Right, but I'm just trying to understand who's, which properties get impacted by a decision one way or the other here, follow?
Yeah, um, and to be honest, I cannot give you a solid number on which structures and which properties would be impacted. Um, I asked our GIS team to look at the previous mapping and then look at the new mapping. And anybody who, uh, was not included in the previous FEMA floodplain, but was now included in the new mapping is who we gave notice to via the state through Measure 56. Um, that is something that I can get.
Jamie, okay, just, we'll stop that line of questioning. I'm, I'm trying to understand, at risk is floodplain insurance. And that has to do with a 100-year floodplain, which is the subject of the new mapping. There's some maps out, but, but, but let that be as it may. So maybe, maybe let's turn to counselors. Counselors have questions of you. Then Jamie, if it's legit, what I'd like to do is allow Jane and Tom, anyone else, to ask questions as well as council members. Can we do that on the hearing?
Yeah, 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 no, that's, that's a part of the hearing. I, I believe, I, I kind of think that my question might, um, help illuminate and, um, support Jamie's, so whenever, um, I'll, I'll be here.
Jane, I, I want to go to council first, go around the table and then we'll go to the public, please. So, council.
I'm sorry, I didn't, tell me when to talk, I didn't hear that.
Just wait, wait until your turn, I'll come back to you, okay? Okay, Noah.
Okay, I, I do think I can, um, help Jamie's.
I, I wanted to ask about the various procedures. Jamie, can you hear us?
Jamie, can you hear Noah?
No, I'm sorry, no, I didn't hear you. Do you mind speaking up?
Of course. Uh, I wanted to ask about the various procedures are related to variants to individuals. I was viewing earlier and that process didn't seem super clear to me. I guess I'm kind of curious, can we do that with legal protection to the property owner? Or is there a way we can do that, which allows the property owner to like independently forego their ability to claim this insurance?
Um, I'm gonna repeat the question back to you for clarity. So, um, you're asking about the variance procedure within the floodplain ordinance? And if that individual does not go through the permitting process, if they are able to claim NFIP insurance, am I correct in that?
I don't think so. And I think what I'm trying to ask is if we were as the city council, my understanding is that the city council, we can grant a variance to an individual who owns a piece of private property. If we were to do that, uh, what is our liability or be able to grant a variance or give some kind of option to a property owner so that they can have that variance? And then kind of keep ourselves free of liability and maintain liability.
Got it.
To keep our, most of the, most.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so what is the city's liability for granting a variance? So, um, what's interesting is I have worked with Dan Meter for last year and a half or so. And in his, um, in his like 55 years of land use applications, he has never approved a variance before. However, I mean, I know that's still an often for the city and the council, but it's really easy to, to meet the no net loss sort of calculation. And so it's not something likely to come before you guys. However, because the, um, what the city is adopting is word for word, out of the Oregon floodplain, you know, their model ordinance, um, it's been vetted by land use attorneys. You guys would, um, be within your rights, uh, to, to support that sort of a decision. So, um, I don't see really any liabilities from the city because it's a, it's a pretty like yes, no check mark, whether you go down one path. And then if somebody is looking for a variance, then the burden of proof is on that applicant. Um, and so it wouldn't be the, the city's liability, um, it would, it would completely be on them and any sort of application that included a variance. Um, you know, Andrea, Amy and myself would definitely make sure that, um, it was elevated to the council, to your, your city attorney, just to make sure that we're toeing the line. Um, and, you know, we don't get into uncharted territory. But, um, really great question, Noah. Thank you for bringing it up and thank you for reading the ordinance. So, thank you so much.
Charlie. What's, what's the deadline in which we need to make a decision on this with?
So actually, uh, the deadline was technically yesterday. However, um, we've been, or associates of mine have been in contact with the DLCDs, so like the planning arm of Oregon. Um, they are the administrator of the National Floodplain Insurance Program. And they are so far behind on checking jurisdictions and make sure that they're following through. That she thought that it would be a reasonable, um, timeline for adoption to occur before, um, the end of July. So, uh, now until the end of July.
My worry is that we're, our ability to hear you clearly is muffled. Our ability to see clear maps is inaccurate or in script. And that's like shooting in the dark, in my opinion. I, that's, and my opposite is a floodplain, so I, I know I have to accuse myself, but still, for the way in the shoot, this is going down. It seems unattending to proceed, where your house sits in my property. So, so the biological net loss would apply to you if you want to. Well, and that's where I need the detailed maps and the description of what this is actually talking to or not. I'm talking about words and verbal, we need to.
Other, other council questions, comments? If, if not, let's do a round with Jane and Tom. Jane, Jane, we'll go, go to you in this, let's take this as questions for planner for Jamie as opposed to testimony and support her. Does that make sense, Jane?
Um, okay, um, I actually will preface my question with, now that I've heard Jamie, a support for the council to vote on the third option. And then. And then, um, as the landowner, my question, I've tried to read everything and understand it, and the permit asks are arduous. If one is in, determined to be in the floodplain, which part, which equals all, then there's a question of insurance. So then, the interesting thing about the designated seventeen people is that if we realistically look at how things are going to flood, the seventeen people of which myself and, you know, Charlie, or have, are, we're not going to flood, however, other people are going to flood. And so then the question is, are we going to, who are we going to ask for studies of the raising Columbia to determine who really is in the flood? And if we are in a situation of adopting federal guidelines to get who is determined, it seems to me, which I didn't know before tonight, and Jamie, you've been really helpful in sending me information, what I'm hearing you say is that that gives some determination by the city to determine who can get permits based on this. Because the, 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 the truth is seventeen people were issued this warning, and we, many of us seventeen are not going to even flood, however, other people are going to flood. So who determines, who's going to have this arduous process of permits if there aren't sane people at the heart of our government deciding that for us? So, um, hopefully that. I'm one of the seventeen, my, hopefully that is, um, I didn't know that, fully understood the three options. I think number three makes full sense, which is we as a city take on the responsibility to look at each individual case and determine, determine the fair outcome for all, for everybody. And I think that, um, I'd vote for that.
Yeah, Jane, Jane, just, I think I hear what you're saying. You're talking about the city engineers got the job. What are the specifications criteria?
Oh, wait, I'm so sorry, um, I, I can't, you're really echoing, I can't hear you.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, I think we got your points.
With, um, I, yeah, I, I, okay, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 Jane, you're great, I heard you loud and clear. Um, so the, the floodplain administrator is, uh, going to be the city manager. Um, so Andrea, and she has the right to designate, um, who is going to do the review. And so it makes sense for the city engineer to go through it. I'm not an engineer, I don't have the calculations, so it's not really within my, my wheelhouse. Um, but I hear, I hear you in this, um, sort of, you know, like limbo, not really.
Well, it's an esoteric, yeah, yeah, I mean, I've been designated clipped off in the floodplain, but I'm really not in the floodplain, but other people are. And so to, to give jurisdiction over a state or in a federal thing without city control to review doesn't make sense.
Oh, no, 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 everything would be city control, and currently the city's.
That's, that's why I'm, yeah, that's why I'm like in full support of your number three.
Awesome, yeah, no, the, the city is still, um, they have current floodplain regulations. Any sort of, um, property, like even if you're clipped by a floodplain, sorry, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
I'm full.
Jamie, Jamie, and Jane, look, look, we're, we're not, not making great headway here. We, we're lacking enough information, but let me, let me turn to Todd. Todd, if you have some more questions, are you ready to?
Well, no, Todd is confused, um, because I was given the notice.
Sir, if we're, uh, just to verify, if there's two options. Can we, for the council, make sure that we know what the options are, actually attracted to the town?
Oh, yeah, I, I, my, my public comment is we need to rethink this, not vote tonight. Yeah, because I was given, yeah, I'm not, this was not, I was given Moser Creek and Rock Creek miles, uh, Creek substation, total daily load management data. So just give me my papers back, because it doesn't quite relate to this.
We have the team, you know?
Yes, that's what, yes, I think I have a wrong date.
Yeah, you're.
That's what I, you guys are all, this is all a little new to me, uh, here, so.
TM, TMDL is a totally separate.
This is more related to that, we're not dealing with that tonight, apparently. Well, I need, I can, I have, I assume this applies to me since I got the notice, but I have no other. So I don't know.
But you don't, you don't care to test it, right?
I would like, so I did, the notice said floodplain, so I started researching that. There's no data for a floodplain here, so I don't know who, the federal was. I don't know where the data is coming from.
Charlie's, I think that's right, okay.
And I've lived here fifty-five years, and I've seen local floods that washed out multiple bridges. It never came up and washed out any houses except for the lowest down there.
That's part of our problem, it's understandable.
That's right, I, I, yes, yes.
And that's, that's the floodplain mapping that kids are, Jamie, let me propose something. I, I don't believe we are ready to, we're not in a crystal clear understanding of what the implications are and the trade-offs here. I think we have to do more homework to really, really boil us down to what we're talking about in terms of pros and cons. Can we extend the hearing to another date? We do some more homework in between so we can answer some of these basic fundamental questions. Where is the floodplain? Which properties apply? What historically have we issued in terms of permits or variances, what have you? So I think, I think there's too much confusion. I'll, I'll, I'll admit, I'm frankly confused, I think we all are, so can Jamie, is it, we defer the hearing or extend the hearing?
Um, so.
Go ahead.
I want to say that, um, yeah, uh, the, right now, what is before the council is simply the regulation, um, not necessarily the mapping. The mapping is already decided, there's already studies, um, for the, the county, um, that, uh, I think they were published in twenty twenty-two. And so that is not on the table for you guys at this moment. However, um, what, one of the implications for not adopting this this evening is the, uh, the potential for not being involved in that national flood insurance program. So, um, what, what I would suggest the council does is adopt, um, and then we can, you know, meet that benchmark. And if the council wants to like walk things back, um, there, it's easy to walk it back. Um, I mean, I've been working for the city for the last year and a half. I have yet to issue a floodplain permit for you guys. So it's not like they are very likely. Um, again, uh, a reason why I've been directing jurisdictions to have them outside of their development code. And so that we do not have to go through, um, this notification process with the state. Um, it lives in Title thirteen, not Title fifteen, which is the zoning ordinance. And so, um, there are a lot of lawsuits that are still happening. So these, these regulations could essentially disappear tomorrow. Um, but as of right now, I, I would urge the council to be on the, um, uh, more discerning side and just get the state and the federal government out of our hair. But it's really up to you.
But you're saying adopt, and then if we have concerns later, we have buyer two more, so we can walk it back later.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, that may be viable strategy, but here's, here's the thing. Again, I don't think we really understand the implications. I get your point, we probably have never issued a permit in this city. I'll bet, I'll bet we've never issued a permit for people doing something down along the creek outside of their structure, because you wouldn't be able to build a structure in a hundred-year floodplain anymore, right?
That, that gives, I don't, can you guys hear me?
Jane, Jane, hold on, we're having council discussion here, please.
I was going to say, I, I, I.
Go ahead.
No, no.
Sorry, um, I, I would.
Jamie, my concern. Jamie, not Jane, Jamie, my concern, Jamie, is this could be much ado about nothing. The, the implications here may be writ next to mill, but, but I don't think we have enough information before us to actually determine yet. Gary, go ahead.
If we adopt this ordinance tonight, are we locked into one of those three options? Or can we, can we pick which option we decide on after adopting this? Because it sounds like the push is to adopt it in order that the city can stay and have flood, floodplain properties insured.
Right, right, that's, and that's the, that's which, that's no more risk, exactly. Yeah, yeah, maybe.
So I, I'm so sorry, Mayor Anderson, um, to address your, your question, yes. So if the city council thought that the, the buy-up option or the no development option was more appropriate, then yeah, we can totally walk it back. Um, but right now, what the council is risking is not being included in that federal funding, which is very critical. There are, uh, there are insurance agencies that offer, yeah, supplementary, but not, not like the federal government does.
Right, what we don't want to do is end up denying somebody that needs floodplain insurance the opportunity to have it, which is, that, that would be a bad outcome, right? So, so, so Jamie, let's, if we will complete testimony, we could decide to adopt your proposal, the third option, the state rule. And then if later we do some more homework on this and find out there's some problem that we didn't understand, we can walk it back, we could change the ordinance.
Yes, completely.
Okay, wait, well, hold on, Lydia's got a question or comment.
I think that if we adopt the third, um, ordinance, we do a little bit more research, we decide to walk back and then re neg all that, how is that going to offer work? How is that going to affect, say, Captain Fitzpatrick and the other lots? Like, how is that going to affect them?
Well, that would be, have to be part of the analysis if we've been thinking about that, right?
Yeah, like, is that going to affect their, like, homeowners insurance and all that, buy-up being then.
Right. So, so that would be part of the work, if some reason we don't like it would be perfect, is it?
Yeah, if, if, if I can speak to that question, um, so right now, um, I, I hate to say this, but, um, I've gone through three different federal government FEMA, um, you know, uh, employees that were fired and then fired and then fired. Um, and so after I feel like the dust settled, um, there would be more of an option and more of an opportunity to get a FEMA representative or somebody from DLCD to come to the city council to discuss these issues. Because we're all kind of, um, we're, we're working in uncharted territory right now. Uh, but this is the, the federal mandate, um, and so that's why I'm, I'm pushing it for you guys, so that your citizens or your residents have access to that funding.
Yeah, as, as you said, the Trump administration could change, so, well, listen, it doesn't sound like there's harm if we were to decide to adopt as you're proposing. We could do that, it's a safety valve, walk it back. Do we, do we, while we think about that, I want to, I want to complete the hearing. Jamie, so Todd, Todd, you do not have testimony?
Well, I, I'm, that's kind of my concern, I was not given the right documents, so I have no idea how this affects me. Well, I had a notice, but I don't know, I'm unable to research it, I researched the wrong stuff. I did, I had this other PDL thing, not the floodplain. And another comment is, I can't find these hundred-year floodmaps on your website, the county's website, the state's website, or the federal website.
Yeah, I get that. Because they, versus a couple around the last two years, I can't see. The way it's part of treatment, I don't think there's any structure.
Okay, Jamie, Jamie, uh, let me ask you, Jamie, Jamie, do you have testimony one way or the other to give? Are you just having questions?
Um, uh, okay, uh, sorry, it's the mute on mute. Um, whoever was just talking, I'm in that position as well. I haven't done full analysis, but what I've done is to kind of understand that, um, and I was like willing to, you know, put up swords. But what I understand is that the, the option three, from what I understand, is that, that gives sane understanding to review things. Because the truth is that all of us who receive these notices, it's, it's sort of random and it doesn't make sense. And then we have to like fight a lot of things. However, if we have a city that is looking at all of this within this big plane, we can reason with our city and they can make jurisdiction. Um, anyway, um, I, I, I like feel that that's a super good option that gives our city power to review each case, independent of mapping, which is archaic, doesn't make sense, which is random. And the seventeen of us that received these notices are not even going to be the ones who are going to be flooded. And so that's a whole nother battle, but at least if Article three, option three is adopted, the city can go, oh, yeah, that's true, you know, you're not going to be flooded, so we're not going to. Anyway, I will.
Jamie, Jamie, keep the decision, keep the decision-making local. Okay, are we, Jamie, do you have anything else to offer? We're going to close, we'll close the public testimony at this point, and any further deliberation on the council. I think what, what I'm concluding is, we go with Jamie's recommendation. We're now adopt our proposal, options through it. And if we find there's egregious problems with it down the road, we'll readdress the new ordinance. Meanwhile, as Jamie said, who knows what the government's going to be doing with that. So, so people, it seemed like we got headshots to do that. Jamie, can we, can we at this point, uh, take a motion, uh, along those lines and take a vote?
Yes, um, if the, if the city council does not have any other questions, and if there aren't people in the audience or on this call, um, that would like to provide comments. Um, and thank you, Jane, for your comments and your understanding, um, then yes, the city council can motion to close the public hearing and continue deliberations. And in deliberations, you can still ask questions of me, um, but it's just between you and me. Uh, but it's just between you and me and no longer any public comment.
Okay, so we close the public.
Hang on. Wait, I have one more comment?
Oh, okay, good.
I, I mean, like I said, I know nothing because I was provided the wrong information by the city. I hope, I assume you guys must have information to fully understand what you're voting on and making a decision on. It seems like it's an emergency, but she said she can't find anybody at FEMA that's going to enforce anything. They don't even know if they're going to work tomorrow. So it doesn't seem like it's a major emergency to get the data to them because they're all fired and in chaos. So could it be expanded a little bit so all the affected citizens can, and the council can fully be aware of what they're voting on?
So, so I guess the flip side of that, Todd, is there is some risk. Todd, you may lose your opportunity to protect the insurance along the way if you don't take an action. Some risks that are, maybe the authorities give us an extension. So that would be a bad outcome. Whereas if we adopt this, as Jamie said, we're all acknowledging, we could revise it later.
I would choose the least, the most open.
Is that what it is? Yeah, that's, those, those, the information is not what I got.
It's our options.
And that's not the one that's going to cost me $25,000 or whatever to.
Right, that was how I was.
Depending on how the C S or the costs for the ordinance.
Yeah, and that's Jamie's point, even keeping a local, people that know our town, we're going to listen to the citizens. So I, I think this is kind of low risk at this point. It's better to not take the risk of denying somebody with insurance and people that are wrong things of local government. So it makes sense to me, Todd. So are, are we, we ready then to, we close the hearing portion? I guess one question is what kind of additional homework should we do on this? Maybe we could skip on that and think about that. But if we adopt this, that we've adopted. So, so any further deliberation? Would anyone share it?
I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Witt, uh, I'm sorry, I called you Mayor Witt, Mayor Anderson. Um, if there is clear direction from the council on what should be research, I am more than happy to do that for you guys. So I'll, I'll end it at that.
Yeah, I, I think what that is, Jamie, is a crystal clear delineation of what property is affected. The seventeen people that were noticed, what's potentially affected structurally or non-structurally? People that just have, Charlie's got shrugs up against the creek. Is he going to be impacted when somebody goes moving? Or then where, where is that hundred, hundred year floodplain? There, there are maps out there. Yeah, and they're available. So Jamie, I think those are the things for clarity. And as, as Todd says, so, so people that were noticed have the right investment information. I think that's a pretty, we can do some more work.
That's awesome. And yeah, and I can follow up with you, um, on those items. Yeah, I can do that.
I'd, I'd be happy to work with you. I think I understand enough to be able to delineate, okay, what do we do? Need to do to make greater clarity.
And just, just a question, if you have to say this, don't we get down the road and the city engineer goes to a property to establish their floodplain, um, sort of, um, their, their floodplain status? If the city engineer, example, I live on Logan Creek, I have a hundred foot cliff off the back of my yard. If, if that was to flood, the water levels would have to be so high.
I, I, I do have a comment on what Charlie has said. I can't hear.
Hey, close this, oh, yeah, Jamie, please, but, um, if, if the city engineer comes up to a property state such as myself for that, can the city engineer then submit something to FEMA and say, you guys need to be.
Yes.
But playing that.
Yeah, I know. It's called, um, a map correction. It's been in your guys' code for, I think, since the eighties. So it's called either a clomer or lomer, where you're like, hey, there's, obviously I'm a hundred feet up. Like, why am I included? Um, and then it's coordination with the Division of State Lands, um, to get you removed. But yes, map revisions are definitely a part of this ordinance.
And that's why we need number three, because, I'm sorry, don't mute me, because that was part of my point, which Charlie was making, is that it's a random arbitrary point. And only the city of Mosher can look at this and decide who's going to realistically flood. So I, so anyway, don't, you're going to mute me again, but I had to get that in.
Thank you, Jamie.
Option three.
Jamie.
Yes.
Yes.
This, we're calling for the second reading. We did the first reading.
I'm, I'm sorry, Witt, I can't, I can't, I can't hear you well.
So, so Jane, um, he's actually referring.
To what?
Jamie, can you hear me?
He's actually referring to what?
To Jamie.
Jamie, Jane, Jane, the city planner.
Sorry, Jane, Jamie, yeah, sorry.
Jamie, is this in fact the second reading?
Are you asking Jane Elkin a question?
Jamie Crawford, Jane, Jane, please.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie Crawford.
This is, this is the first reading of this. So you have a, you have a script, you don't have an answer?
My concern is that this is only the first reading. Then we won't have a second reading till the next meeting, and then we're going to be.
So we can do a first and second reading during this meeting. That's what Jamie wants.
Okay. And that's the whole reading. We call it emergency to meet the federal mandates of the damage. Okay, so that's why we're getting to the first. Okay, we need the title. We have the title. You do. All right, so we're going to entertain the motion.
All right, so I move that the council approves the first reading by title only and adopt ordinance two oh three. And the title is an ordinance adopting flood hazard regulations that reflect the 2024 Oregon Model Floodplain Management Ordinance and declaring an emergency to meet state federally mandated adoption deadlines.
Do we need to? Second. Okay, Brandon's second's off paper.
That was amazing, but, um, actually the first reading needs to be in full. So sorry.
Okay, all right, well, redo it. All day? All the rare accidents and everything?
It's not that long. I wrote a really short ordinance. You're fine.
No, no, no.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, hey, let's, let's break order so we can wrap this up. Let's focus.
Um, Mayor Anderson, I'll be seeing it.
Okay.
All right, so an ordinance adopting flood hazard regulation that reflects the 2024 Oregon Model Floodplain Management Ordinance and declaring an emergency to meet state federally mandated adoption of deadlines. Whereas the United States Department of Homeland Security, or Securities Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCP, have directed cities to adopt either a biological option or the 2024 update to the State of Oregon Flood Model Flood Hazard Ordinance to regulate development within flood hazard zones before July 2022, 2025. And whereas the city has chosen to adopt the 2024 update to the State of Oregon Model Flood Hazard Ordinance. And whereas the city council held a legislative public hearing to discuss and adopt the 2024 update to the State of Oregon Model Flood Hazard Ordinance. And whereas exhibit one.
Like you were sent. What, who sent what to the seventeen? Jamie, did you send that out?
It was sent out by Jane.
So, so I'm not confused about what Todd got.
Todd got, well, I went to ask. Did I talk to you? I took, Amy sent me this. Amy sent me City of Mosher, Mosher Creek and Rock Creek, the, the TMDL. When I asked for the, said I got the, that's why I'm so confused.
It's actually about the original part of it.
Yes, I received a flyer in the mail. I went into the office to ask what's this all about? And then that's where I got.
TMDL.
Yes, correct.
If I remember correctly, you said TMDL and floodplain, and I must have confused the.
I don't know where I got, I just, I don't, I don't know where I got TMDL.
I just. I think the only reason person that.
No, please.
We need to send something else out to the people that have already got this information.
I don't know exactly what was sent by Jamie's office, so.
It was just that there was going to be a change in the notice.
Okay.
So, so if I, if I could, if I could speak to that, um, and I, I'm so sorry, I had to disconnect and reconnect and I caught the tail end of it. Um, so anybody who received a notice, received, uh, from the state of Oregon, it's called a Measure 56 Notice. Um, there was a ballot measure, I think in like 2004, that said any regulation change that would or could, um, influence your property value, uh, those property owners need to be noticed. And so because the city has always had, um, a floodplain permitting process and has always regulated stuff with the floodplain, those owners that are still within that floodplain were not noticed. However, the, the people from this new mapping that like got caught in, um, in their new, you know, uh, sort of direction of mapping, those individuals were noticed and provided the, that legal, um, language under O R S 197. So, um, I hope I answered that. Let me know if I did not.
Jamie, yeah, so Jamie, your, your correct information was sent out.
The information was sent correctly.
Yes.
I did the additional upon requesting further information about the ordinance and various things. That's what I, I got wrong.
So you don't have anything to do. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, we're going to wrap up here. Uh, announcements, a few. First, a big thank you to Noah, Noah Walter, the step up. We put on them a kit board. You guys, we call.
What, you're calling?
That's a, that meant I came and asked. We had someone, I sent you guys all. Met all the spots. So thank you all. That's good for us. Good for the chat. Uh, joint music facility, uh, the committee met last week and took stock of where we are. We, you know, we did not get the two map nights. I would be through the hospital or through Christmas tree, capital construction. Meanwhile, Representative Greg Smith, who are east, recommended that we make a request to the Oregon Emergency Board, which is the legislature. We made a legislative, so just today, we sent a letter to the board asking to try and make the case. And the other suggestion that came from Senator Bonham and Representative Elfrid, who came to our home. Was that we consider once again going to the short session. President's agenda. So the committee, Todd and myself, Ron, Ron Miller, which means helping work as task to do, one of those tasks is to delineate very specifically all the funds that we've been providing and have committed in terms of sunsets or strings attached and what happens. So we know if we don't have any other options, whatever that is, it's possible. So the committee's going to be needing to, Todd, until the next month again, once some of this homework has been done and talked about. Anything to add to that?
Maybe the, the objective there is to be able to start a parallel plan of uh, alternative concepts of, you know, the, of this, of a facility based on the amount of money that we actually have. A committee to that that's just starting to look at that option.
Or any order that's under the base.
Yeah, and the basing has big implications of, like, the Dallas stream that Merkley has through U S B A. But anyway, yeah, that, that could be the concept.
I wanted to mention that Andrew's got the request, like Jamie and Ben was getting prior years for water supply to residences outside the city of the Mosher Valley. So I think Andrew and Amy are working on a fee schedule if we were to elect as a policy matter that we're willing to provide water to look outside of the city. There's a lot of implications there, but anyway, I think that's something that we need to bring back council. Maybe including the next week.
In all, all districts.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So I've been, you know, I've had a few inquiries. One is a local person wanting to provide a lot of services to folks struggling with their wells. Um, and, and another was contract. And, um, one went already has been doing this as a courtesy to the community. We want, we might provide an opportunity for, for a local business to either get water and do it safely and make sure that we have, um, um, you know, a form, a way to move forward with that. And we'd like to do it as quickly as possible because there are folks in the valley right now that are actually looking for this service.
Can I ask them what capacity do you need to find water? Like, is it to like individuals, like drinking water? Or is it someone who has like crypto farm that needs?
Or is it someone who has a crypto farm that needs knowing? Okay, yeah, this, this is for residential access, little sister's and water suppression. And then for local contractors who are doing gas irrigation. Okay. Yes, correction.
So what are you bringing, we're going, there, there's elements of, we need to develop a policy. Is it just residential use? Who, who can put their hands on our hydrology and water? What kind of liability, what's an appropriate fee schedule? Andrea and Amy, we've worked on that, looking at other fee schedules, because there's a lot of costs, it's not just the only end of the future maintenance of the system, there's staff time that goes into this, so they're, they're looking at what's appropriate. So all of that needs to be built into the policy, but to me, you know, our, our water systems are the city. However, we are a bigger community, and to me, to the extent that we can provide water without detrimental effects to the city users, and we can, we could be appropriate cost to pay for that, it's a reasonable thing to do.
That is, but then there again, if these fees that remain for our bills are being calibrated for total water. I don't know where, there's a water meter. So there, this is not a serious.
Come in here. There is a lot of people there who have come to the, the, to the, which are, and they're like three or four times a year, hammer drives. And, and they pay a commercial rate, uh, warrant, um, there, there was like a meter slash fire hydrant, and along that, that whole thing. Um, and also, the third thing, um, in terms of being, making sure that these people know how a water hydrant or a fire hydrant actually operates. Except, because if people have the idea that you can follow flow by using the ballot of fire hydrant, without realizing there's drain holes, it's live, and shoot water straight down.
Yeah, so certified, we have that certified individuals, but we have to refute the cost. We have, and we already, Andrea and Amy, you're talking about, commercial use versus residential use, different ways. So, to your point, Charlie, it cannot be detrimental to our system, to the city. So, so anyway, that's, I just want to make you all aware, because I, I'm getting a lot of calls, and, you know, send them to Andrea, and it's, well, it's an issue here. Okay, last thing from me, and then we'll, I'll see if you guys have what to use. Andrea, let's talk a little bit about the next meeting, so we planned one meeting in August.
Well, that, that was the idea, to just do one meeting in August, and right now, it's, it's scheduled for the sixth, which is just keeping this away from today. And there isn't a law on the agenda yet, um, but the, uh, the, I'm gonna say the TMDL. The hazard.
Oh, the H and B.
Yes, that's the one. So there, that's, it's, that's the main thing on the agenda that I could think of right now.
So, so in regard, two things, we talked before, our charter says one meeting a month, I think we all agree, if you can do one meeting a month, save a lot of staff hours, makes things more efficient. In those months where we have too much business, and we have too many, so, so you guys will go through that. And the second thing is, try, let's try and keep Amy apprised, if we know our travel schedules, we're gonna be out of town. Do that as soon as you know, if you're not gonna be here on the sixth, let her know right away in case we need you to have a call.
And to avoid rescheduling this, do you think that the sixth is the best date for that meeting? Or would you rather have that on the third Wednesday?
Yeah, that's a good question, how, how do you miss?
Sorry, so it would either be the sixth or the twenty in August. Either one of them.
Six instead of me. Six, sorry, six. Okay, is that good for you, Andrea, is that too tight?
Well, it, 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 it isn't, I mean, no, we'll make it work, we'll make it happen. There's, there's not enough that we can have to rearrange this hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
So I want any hearings or any courses to do, so, you know.
Maybe, maybe could we shoot to, so NHMP and the Mosher, and then we need to take action on that. Could we shoot to maybe have a basic draft of a water policy?
Oh, yes, yes.
Anything else? Okay, that's it for me, Andrea, anything?
No.
Any comments?
I guess, I guess I have one thing, it's just everybody needs to, you know, it's our small community, well, we need to keep our eyes open and, and support our state community, especially after hours, it seems, you know, we have had several run-ins, not run-ins, but we've had, uh, we've had a lot of people talking, courage, and we're really trying to come up with this. For that, and it's really catching them. That they can't continue, you know, please stop doing that, we, we look up an ordinance, the ordinance says that we allow trash, we put it public receptacles. But when they're full, people need to smarten something else.
Amy, how about Rock Creek Gate passes coming in?
They still have not been received, um, they were supposed to come in today. Um, per John's conversation with the salesperson that they've been working, I didn't see him in the mail today, crossing fingers for tomorrow, checking the mail daily, so.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, Amy, thank you. Andrea, thank you, Jamie, Chris Don, Monica, um, this meeting is now terminated at eight thirteen.
And with regards to Rock Creek, if we do not have passes by the end of this month, we would like to propose the gate and just have it available for help and current cables.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to switch the, switch the way that the building will drop. We've got some, we've got some simple guides from folks that warning, we reuse their card. But I think it'll be great.
Are you good with that?
Um, it'll be interesting to see, I mean, I think if we have current passes, we'll be happy. Um, and so, maybe that's. If it reminds them, or you want, you want to pay a bunch of cards. We're doing, we're doing a mail. We go wolf, and it's not really what I'm saying, you don't hear from me.
That's okay. It seems to happen, and I was confused, but I'm, I'm actually, it looks like this is in the next year. Or you can just email it to me, that if you don't need this, or, you can, just email it to me, I'll just go.
Sure, I got it here, right here.
I, because I can see it on my computer, I can't see it on my computer.
Well, I'm sorry to, like, I have a colleague here, so if you're patient.
Okay, just a big scramble of all this other stuff.
Yeah. I, I do appreciate. Oh, okay, when you have time, or whatever, um.
Okay. We're all in this together, are you okay? You're gonna cry, are you gonna sweat?
Well, between what's happening, I live in my own.
Oh, Jesus.
On the plane here?
Okay, you still have a holt?
Yes.
Okay.
Fire touched two sides of my house. It made it, um, so I go to the ground, it's on top of my baby.
So, basically, you were here at work, and then here, and.
Well, I missed Monday, I couldn't get out, um, they pushed us out, um, and they understand that I'm vocal, we is in Appleton. So they pushed us out of it, and then they got us in, and I couldn't breathe, it's just, um, so, yeah. So I'm so sorry, everything was.
Oh my God, do not, no, no, no. Last year.
Well, I'm.
Fire actually, it was on your house.
Literally, uh, it's, and there's no damage, it's, um, it's terrifyingly, well, um, like, for instance. So, that shows you exactly. How close the fire got.
Oh.
That's the damage.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I don't understand how that happens. Yeah, and then all of that side, and then the other side, and that's, it just, and that brings that one right there, and that's the damage.
I don't believe miracles, what did you do now? Yeah, that, that was my air tire bluster.
And it's hiding.
Um, it's T one eleven, and we moved in two weeks ago. Um, I just got everything we need. We got our animals, we got my house, I am, I am always going to add, you're right, if there's a miracle, that is, so.
Okay, you need everything again.
We are good, we are great, I am.
Well, thank you for switching her.
Now.
Be honest.
Yeah. I appreciate y'all, thank you so much. Um, yeah, we have our friend in Appleton, we're still under, um, though, however, they're letting us in now, so. I arrived from Appleton to the Dallas, or to Golden Dale, and the Golden Dale went to the Dallas, to Los Angeles. For, so, yeah.
I hope this thing gets talked down.
Well, I heard, my friend's a firefighter over there. Um, yeah, uh, he said as of yesterday, they were told that they're not going to let anybody back in till mid-August. So, yeah.
That is, that's all we can do.
I appreciate y'all, thank you.